Okay. Call this special meeting to order, and we have a quorum. So, tonight, the focus of this special meeting is to resolve the recent conversation concerning Article Number 10 of the Library's Articles of Incorporation. Let's review how we got here. If you remember back in October, Supervisor Jamison brought up the sale of the Villa Avenue Building and began making inferences about that transaction, and then again in his debrief and research document, causing questions and confusion in the minds of the public. We wondered where this was headed. On December 10th, we all remember sitting at the Government Center until 2:00 a.m., when 97 of our fellow citizens spoke out about the creation of a Warren County Library Board, and yet the four-to-one vote occurred despite public outcry. Clearly, the Board of Supervisors must know that as a nonprofit, Samuel's cannot be governed by the Warren County Library Board. Government overreach into policymaking or day-to-day operations would cause Samuel's Public Library to lose its nonprofit status. We asked ourselves, what is the point of a separate board, and why? Red flags went up, and this began to feel increasingly like an attack. And so, the Samuel's Board of Trustees called a special meeting on December 17th to talk with lawyers and determine how to protect the library in its future. This included a discussion about protecting our assets in this unprecedented time. Coming out of the closed session of that meeting, the Board approved the changes to the Articles of Incorporation, selecting a new registered agent, and amending the paragraph on dissolution of assets. The Board also approved a motion to work with our attorney to take all action, as may be necessary regarding Chapter 7 of the Warren County Code of Ordinances. The minutes of this meeting can be found on the Library's website in the January 13th Board Packet. Fast forward, and we are once again under attack, this time from Mr. Belk acting on behalf of the Warren County Library Board, accusing us of any number of violations surrounding this action. We have consulted with our lawyers, and none of the codes cited by Mr. Belk apply to us, nor is there a FOIA violation, as I outlined last week. I invite you to do your own research, look them up in the Code of Virginia, put them in front of a lawyer, or come in and ask us for a more detailed explanation. This all feels like a setup, meant to confuse the public and smear the reputation of your award-winning library. Once again, we're here to make changes to Article 10, to put to rest any question that the assets of Samuel's Public Library purchased through grants and donated or fundraised monies and the sale of the Villa Avenue Building will stay with Samuel's Public Library to provide an exceptional library for all the residents for many years to come. Other partner agencies in Warren County listed on the county's website are 4-H, Humane Society of Warren County, Blue Ridge Arts Council, Brown Town Community Center. All of those partners come with their own assets too, in order to provide services to county residents. Think about that, and will the county be coming for their assets next? Please remember that this is an article of dissolution, and only comes into play if and when the Board of Trustees would vote to dissolve the nonprofit. Ain't going to happen. We are here to stay. This is what we do, and we do it well. With that, you have in front of you the changes to the Articles of Incorporation, Number 10, and I'll open it up to discussion or ask for a motion.
I'm a bit concerned that White says Commonwealth of Virginia instead of within this area.
Whatever. I mean, we had talked about making sure that they stayed, the assets stayed in Virginia.
I remember that conversation, and at the time, I thought, well, I'm not sure that that's really going to satisfy residents of the community who would say, "I don't want to travel five hours across the state to see my books." So, it seems to me that unless they're in Warren County, we're really not answering the problem.
I think that it should stay, be donated for someplace in Warren County.
Okay.
I think the concern, though, is that are there enough nonprofits to stay within the county? Do we have enough? Is there enough opportunity within Warren County?
Is there something we can add in that says that we would have a preference for Warren County, or at least a certain percentage? My concern is, there's people that are going to say, "Well, we're going to ship all the materials out of the county." They're making arguments, and I want to make sure something stays here.
At the tail end of that sentence, there's an "or." The way that I read that, I want to get clarification, if the intent there is, the way it currently reads, to go to a nonprofit organization in the Commonwealth of Virginia or, as this board determines. So, that "or" opens it up to other options besides a nonprofit.
Yeah, that means we can ship it to anywhere with that "or" statement.
Or you could restrict it to Warren County.
But that "or" statement doesn't have that restriction. It opens it up to everybody.
It allows you to restrict it. It takes it outside, beyond this seated board, so future boards would have more leeway with "or."
I would change that and sell that "or." I would say something like, if the assets cannot be deposited in Virginia, then, or wherever we decide, then the Board has the option to go further, rather than letting the courts have that determination.
So, say, under Section purposes within Warren County, first within Warren County.
I would go first within Warren County, then within Virginia, then within the country. Or, as the Board shall, I think it's more limited to the country, anyway. But the thing is, I want to make sure we have a preference of where we line up. We want Warren County first, then Virginia, if you can't get stuff in Warren County, maybe even the Shenandoah area, I don't know if there's legal definition, but then Virginia, then as we can determine.
It should be Warren County, as long as it's Warren County organization, under Section 501(c)(3).
Yes.
So, it's a Warren County 501(c)(3) first.
Yes.
I would suggest that as a second alternative, a contiguous county, if there's not a qualified entity within Warren County, then we then look at the adjacent counties.
Or District 6.
Isn't the Shenandoah Library 501(c)(3)? No?
No.
They're broken up. So, you've got Ettenberg, and then you have the different branches are their own entities as well.
Well, can we say organizations under Section 501(c)(3) or libraries? Because that opens up the other... I know, it's a problem.
I don't think you want to go... You'd have to be charitable, because otherwise, you're going into government departments and other areas, so...
It has to be charity.
And are we... Is it appropriate that we are talking about all our assets as one, when some of them are tangible, books and whatever else, and the other is cash or an investment portfolio? I'm just wondering, I have no idea, are we getting ourselves into trouble by treating both of those things as one kind? In other words, would it be in the best interest of the community to have those things be possibly done, treated differently, I guess, is what I'm thinking?
I think the way this is written, it's broadly enough that you could disperse your assets for multiple...
We don't have to do it all one way. Okay, well, I think that's important.
Right. And first, you're going to pay off any liabilities.
Mm-hmm. You're settling in a state.
Yeah.
It's really what you're doing.
Take care of your estate.
So, is the language exclusively for library purposes too restrictive, then?
For educational.
I think educational is broad enough to cover.
I think exclusively for educational purposes too.
But would that prohibit us from using some of the portfolio to give the staff a...
No, because that's after. This is after.
Okay.
This is...
The staff would already be set. Okay.
Distribute all library assets exclusively for, I think, educational purposes, right?
Yeah.
My main concern is, I want organizations in Warren County...
To have priority.
To have priority.
I agree. And I think this all came about because some of us were getting, I think, what happened is that there was miscommunication put out there, that it could go to California, or it could go...
Yeah.
And we heard several months...
That was never our intent.
That was never our intent. So, several of us, we're listening to our, you know, we're listening to people.
Trying to make it clear, not more loud.
We're going to make it clear.
I understand that, but right now, I'm looking at it saying, in the Commonwealth of Virginia...
So, let's drill down to what, how would that read? Do you want to start county and then go Commonwealth?
Do I want to start county?
How we get, how, let's figure out the wording.
Okay. I don't know the wording, I just know the intent.
Okay.
So, was it the spirit of the law, I guess, not the technicality of...
Well, first, I think you need to remove the fifth line down. You need to take out, right now, it reads exclusively for library purposes. I think you need to take that out, if you're going to be donating it to educational entities or other entities that may not be exclusively for library purposes.
Okay.
And then, "to such organizations organized and operated exclusively for charitable and educational purposes." "To such organizations located in Warren County."
About putting a period at the end of purposes and starting a new sentence saying that it is the Board's intention or preference to move the assets to...
What you're going to do.
I know, but to start a whole new sentence saying that it's the intention or, you know, the preference, that the Board will move these assets to such organizations, organized and operated in, preferably, the County of Warren. And then, the caveat is, they have to qualify as an exempt organization, right? We're saying that?
You can't just put Warren County...
I think what you can do is, you can say, distribute all library assets exclusively to such organizations located in Warren County, Virginia, organized and operated exclusively for charitable and educational purposes, as shall at the time, qualifies exempt organization or organizations under Section 501(c)(3) of the Code. I'm assuming, I don't have the bylaws in front of me, but I'm assuming that code is defined earlier in the bylaws, if not, it should say Internal Revenue Code. Or the corresponding provision of any future United States Internal Revenue Laws, period. Then, I think you start a new sentence that says, "In the event..."
Any such assets not disposed of, and then repeat.
Exactly.
For Virginia.
Mm-hmm. And I think you should delete, or as the Board shall determine, so there's no question that we're going to choose a for-profit entity, because at the end of the day, if this doesn't result in all the assets being distributed, then you have to go to Circuit Court, and the court...
Will decide.
Yes.
I don't think there's ever an intent for it to go to a for-profit, just the word, the way the wording is.
The way it's worded at the end, it makes it sound like the Board has pure discretion.
So, we just take that one out?
Getting lost in some of the wordsmithing, but the word exclusively, I'd suggest we remove. It talks about exclusively for charitable and educational purposes. It'd be hard to find organizations that exclusively do educational purposes and nothing else. They find nonprofits that have both educational and other service aspects to them that we would want to distribute assets to.
And/or.
So, you're taking, but there's two exclusively, you want the both of them?
Take them both out.
Both of them.
I see it three times.
Three times.
That keeps going. My last sentence, you did four times. It's like a...
Okay. I missed two. Where's that? Oh.
It just keeps popping up.
I found three. This is like a word puzzle.
The last one, I don't think you did get rid of.
So, how, it would be nice if I could get a clean copy of it, so we were all looking at the same thing before we made a final decision. Is that possible to do when we come out of closed meeting, to relook at a clean copy?
I'd like to wrap this up while we're all together. Can, do you have a handle on it? Can you read it? Do you have a handle on?
I'm still working. Still working on it.
So, can we get through the first half, let's say, and then we can wordsmith the last of it? So, the library may be dissolved at any time by the two-thirds vote of the Board. Upon the dissolution of the library, the Board shall, after paying or making provision for the payment of all of the liabilities of the library, distribute...
"of" is off, isn't it?
Yeah, take off the "of" for... Distribute all library assets.
Did we say all remaining?
Do you like remaining?
Yeah, that sounds more precise.
Distribute all remaining library assets. And we're taking off exclusively for library purposes. So, then we jump down to...
Distribute all library, to such organizations.
Distribute all remaining library assets to such organizations, organized and operated, cross off exclusively, for charitable and educational purposes.
Is it charitable "and" or charitable "or"?
Charitable. I think you want, I think you want educational.
Yes. You would want to end on that.
Both of them.
Well, it would be a charitable, educational.
Okay.
Are you thinking it might limit the options we would have?
No, it would have to be both, anyway, so...
Okay, I'm fine.
So, that our missions align.
Okay.
So, charitable, educational?
And.
Cross off the comma and the "and," or do you want to leave the "and"?
You need to have, you need to have a preposition there.
You need to have what?
A preposition.
Okay.
It's lawyer speak, I think.
No, that's English grammar.
I wasn't no good at English.
I think it's a conjunct...
Or conjunct, excuse me.
It's your function, yeah.
So, organized and operated for charitable and, we just don't need the comma.
Right.
Charitable and educational purposes. And are we calling that the end of the sentence?
Well, you left out Warren County.
Warren County, but that's where you said.
Well, that's, I didn't know if we were starting a new sentence about education.
No, what I had was...
Warren County.
Educational purposes in Warren County.
Warren County or County of Warren, Virginia.
I had after, "to such organizations located in Warren County, Virginia."
Okay. I like that. Located in Warren County, Virginia, organized and operated for charitable, so then that flows there. So, now we do a period after purposes.
I got confused. I'm lost.
We made, let's go back up. So, distribute all remaining assets to such organizations located in Warren County, Virginia, organized and operated for charitable and educational purposes.
Under Section...
Under Section...
501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code.
Okay.
With the corresponding provision of any future United States Internal Revenue Laws, period.
Period, okay. So, we're taking out "as shall at the time."
We'll know that.
That needs to be in.
Just moving up, moving...
Let me revisit this. "To such organizations located in Warren County, Virginia, organized and operated for charitable and educational purposes, under Section 501(c)(3) of the Code, with the corresponding provision of any future United States Internal Revenue Laws, period." All right.
You need to take, you took out part of that sentence.
I take out.
"shall at the time" qualifies still, it still needs to be in there. So, purposes.
Qualify under Section 501(c)(3).
Qualify as an exempt organization, organization.
Do you involve that in?
Okay.
"shall at the time" qualifies.
Then after internal revenue laws, there's a period, and we go on to any such assets, and we're ready?
And then, if you want to put the Commonwealth of Virginia in as your next option, I would say, "In the event that the foregoing procedure does not result in the distribution of all of the library's remaining assets, the library shall distribute any remaining assets to such organizations organized and operated for charitable and educational, to such organizations located in the Commonwealth of Virginia, organized and operated for charitable and educational purposes," and then track the rest of that sentence.
It's like we're kind of repeating.
You're basically repeating part of the sentence, but...
Okay.
But it would be the Board that's making the decision, not the library.
The Board, yes.
Yeah, I think I would like to see the full update before making decision.
Okay. Do you want me to go?
It's hard to keep track.
Want me to go type it?
Would help. I don't know.
Can you take a five-minute break, and I'll take Kim in the back, and we'll type it up?
I have it, I have it called up on my computer.
It would take just as long as most changes.
If you recess.
Yeah. We're not in closed session. No. Recession. Recession.
I don't think we'll type it up.
Okay. That's fast. Do we need to... Everybody turned on?
All right.
This is over, we're back in the meeting. And we're all reading.
There is...
A clean copy.
There is one thing I noticed while looking at the most recent articles, and we said exclusively for charitable or educational purposes. Now, we are changing that to charitable and educational purposes.
Was it, it was charitable, comma, and before?
Well, this one was charitable, comma, and.
Right.
This one is just charitable and, and what's on the website.
Can we, can we read what we have?
Okay.
Let's focus on it. Okay, I think this got us, you all got us where we wanted to go. We good?
Well, I had a question about the charitable and educational purposes.
Still?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, our previous bylaws said charitable or educational purposes, so you could do one or the other, as long as it was under 501(c)(3). So, I'm thinking, you know, there, is there home schools that are running under charity, but they're only like educational? Are they included if we have the "or" clause or the "and" clause?
I think a nonprofit homeschooling organization would fall under this easily.
Okay, all right.
You mean, like, so like a homeschool who wouldn't be under a charitable organization?
Well, they'd have to be a...
It would still have to be 501(c)(3), but I just don't know the nuance, as if they would be, is all 501(c)(3) is charitable?
Yeah.
Charitable.
So, charitable...
Charitable.
Downed? Yeah, that's what's kind of throwing me off a little bit. So, it's mainly any nonprofit that's educational in the spirit of what's going on here.
I think it just helps clarify what 501(c)(3) is.
Because some people don't necessarily know exactly what 501(c)(3) is.
Okay.
That answers your question.
My question is more of the nuances between the use of "or" in the previous articles, and now we're changing it to "and," and what the legal ramifications are in interpreting what this is saying, that's my concern.
Okay.
Question, when we go to the next step, if we still have assets, and we're going to distribute assets to an entity somewhere else in the Commonwealth of Virginia, do we want to open that up to be broader than just educational purposes?
I wouldn't, because it wants to say, we need to stick to our mission.
They're not hard to find.
Does the Library of Virginia, are they included?
That's a governmental entity.
They're government, okay.
Okay, well, if we're ready, I think we're ready for a motion.
Well, I could make a motion that we adopt the changes to the Articles of Incorporation as discussed in this meeting and as written on this draft.
Second, Joan is seconding. I'd like to do a roll call vote for this one, if we could.
Sure.
Ms. Man. All right, Michelle Chat?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
Ms. Gerard?
Yes.
Alan Hickman's absent. Michelle Lejer?
Yes.
Mr. Moten?
Yes.
On is absent. Ms. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Richards is absent. Mr. Whitlow?
Yes.
And Ms. Trosh?
Yes.
Of course, Ms. Coler is also absent. Another pass. Okay, great. I want to thank you all for your input and for your time with all this, appreciate it. So we'll make those changes and get them submitted. And then, Joan, I think, so next, we're gonna go into a closed session. Joan's gonna take us in there with her motion. I move the Board of Trustees go into a closed session in accordance with the Code of Virginia, section 2.2-3711a.6, for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations. Give a second. All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, we're gonna enter into a closed session now, so we have to ask the public if we take all their belongings and exit. We'll let you know, if you stick around, we'll let you know when we come back into an open session. Welcome back. Turn it over to Lisa.
I move that the board certifies, to the best of each member's knowledge, that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under sections 2.2-3711a.6 of the Code of Virginia, and only such public business matters were identified in the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body. I need a second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, with that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you all very much.